Selectment meeting being very close to 7:00 P. M. For Thursday, November 3rd, I have all three selectmen present, the town administrator present, according for the citizens of Dunbar is Ms. Dunn. And gentlemen, it was not some, it's an old business.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 27th. A regular meeting minute doesn't matter. Just a couple of small changes on those.
Second, okay? Second by Justin. Any further discussion?
No.
Well written, yeah? I'm just gonna figure out what an ace was, ace type of a draw.
I make a motion to approve the non-public.
All in favor?
Oops, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Justin.
I make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes for October 27th, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, those are not to be sealed so they can be opened.
Yep.
Any other further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment. We have a lot of people on the agenda which are here tonight, which is nice, but anything about start back with a public comment, if there's any, and no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. And I'm gonna start off with the recreation.
Oh, thank you so much, and thank you for having me.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Joe Hendry, 74 long, Palm Grove. I'm a citizen for 36 years, so, um, thank you for.
You make me feel so young.
I'll make you feel even younger when you hear old man.
Can't be, I'd be over 40, 50.
Yeah, let's add a couple decades to that. But anyway, thank you so much for hearing us today. Um, in these years that I've lived in Dunbar, and I've been very lucky to have taken advantage of the activities and the presentations and the events by the Recreation Commission. And then more recently, partly because of COVID and partly because of just people either moving away or their children growing up, the committee itself shrank and they had fewer offerings. Most recently, a bust to Boston a couple of years ago, I recall that one, which was really a good thing. However, so it appears to a number of us that this would be an ideal time to look at the current commission, which consists of two people who very bravely stepped up to do the basketball program, which my son did 25 years ago. And we met with Christine, we did not meet with Jen, but those are the two people who serve as chair and treasurer of the current commission, to see what could we offer? How can we support it? How can we expand the offerings, give and work bodies to help? And so she was kind enough to share some thoughts with us. I gave, in your packet, you should have, I hope, thanks to me, a, um, an overview of what I'm about to say. So I'm not gonna repeat it, but I will summarize it, okay? So you'll have the complete. So, um, anyway, currently, the commission operates with a budget that is called a revolving budget and that was established in 2012 pursuant to RSA 31 dot, dot, 95 slash C, so that the monies that are collected from such things as basketball registrations, maybe the bus to Boston where people paid a small amount to go, this went into a revolving account. And in addition to that, there is a town budget line of $400 currently.
It was reduced over the years because of.
Absolutely, very honestly.
We reduced it.
And completely understandable, yeah, thank you. So then, we met with Christine to discuss the fact that the upstairs in the town building over here, the town hall is going to be available for continued, you know, expanded opportunities. In the old days, there was a softball opportunity for children, which had to go away. There are a lot of things that could happen now, either in that space or possibly in the school or even behind it in the fields and so forth. And, um, and so we talked about what could we do to make this a reasonable way to approach it? So we have two proposals, and they're in your notes. The first proposal has to do with the structure. Currently, there's a chair and a treasurer, and they want to continue to run this basketball program that they got started, which is a lot of work, and I'm so impressed by what they accomplished in a very short amount of time. And then Christine suggested that there be more, two more members added to the commission for a total of four official commissioners, or I don't know if that's what you call them, that would represent groups from the town. And that's, within that, there would be a series of subcommittees. And these subcommittees would take on tasks, because I think one of the problems over the years with any volunteer group is burnout. So we're trying to figure out how to minimize that and help get the town with lots of opportunities without killing off people doing it. So, um, so she suggested four, four people in all, and I know that there is need for secretary. I was reading the RSA and there, I think that's gonna have to happen, that it doesn't occur, doesn't happen right now. Anyway, so some, subcommittees could be called, and these are just ideas off the top of my head right now. A program committee that would be involved with setting up classes. There are so many possibilities that we thought of. I listed them in there somewhere, I'll find them, I'm sure. Anyway, they would have representatives, the subcommittees would have representatives from such groups as garden club, library, the high school and the middle school, because there's a lot of overlap with sports there. The elementary school here, our historical society, the churches and any other committees. So these would be people, volunteers on the subcommittees to get activities for the town. During the, the, the time when there was less being offered, the garden club picked up a couple of activities for the town. And I'm among many things, a garden club member. And so we have for the last bunch of years done the Halloween on the common, lighting the common up, and then Santa Claus, Christmas on the common, which really are not within our mission, but we wanted to keep the community spirit going. And so we set it up, used our equipment, used, used some of our monies to buy the food, and then there was also a lot of donation from members within that. So, but, so we're thinking that by rights, this is really a townwide rec commission type of activity rather than the garden club, and would like to pass that back to the town as a whole. We would survey town members to determine what activities they'd like. And this would continue to be independent of the old home day committee, because I believe that was separated off a couple of years ago, which makes, again, good sense, because that's such a major undertaking. So that's proposal number one. I was going back up, let me just find. So what we really also wanna do is make sure we offer to a variety of constituents, family activities, young children activities, maybe a mom's group, maybe yoga classes, maybe line dancing. We had line dancing in the old days, that was great. That had to go away, but it might come back. So those are some of the things we're thinking of. So proposal number one had to do with the structure, which would be four people rather than the two currently, with a series of subcommittees overseen by those four committees.
So it's a 400%.
Pardon?
It's a 400% increase of what we had.
Yeah, if you can find the people, I don't think you got a problem with us.
Well, it's been great. I mean, we are just putting out the word, we had six people who sat down with Christine this week. Proposal number two, within this document that you received, has to do with funding, and our proposal is that the town retain the commission's revolving account as it has already been established, and that we would ask that the budget line go from $400 to $1,000 if that can be done, because this is in part in need for the supplies, which would be added to these activities, for example, for the Halloween. We spent about $350 this year just on the snacks for the kids who came, but we being garden clubs.
Right. I understand.
Anyway, as well as the, a lot of the decorations and so forth, which we supplied. In addition, we're looking at new offerings, such as, this is where I found it, fitness, I wrote it, I couldn't even find it, fitness opportunities, new mom's groups for young children, school, uh, activities during those school times, particularly the summer. I talked with our librarian about that, and she said she'd love to see some more activities with children during the summer. Sports clinics, kindergarten soccer, so her suggestion and so much more. And according to section 35B, colon 3, this empowers the commission to charge for the use of facilities and for participation, and it is envisioned that some of these classes and other activities, for example, the bus to Boston, would charge a small fee for participation. Not all of them, I mean, they don't charge for the Halloween thing, for example, but that if we have classes, because I think we paid for line dancing in the old days.
It'd be like a co-payment.
Yes, some, just to help defray some of the expenses. So, and we would continue as much as possible to get volunteers for any of this. So that is, in some, our proposal this evening.
I have, I'm fully supportive, and I think you're, the budget request is very reasonable. My only caution is, don't bite off more than you can choose year one. I would get into it gradually and see how, you know, it was, it's gonna be contingent on volunteers, it's gonna be contingent upon people participating, and if you do too much, those four people on the committee are gonna get burnt out too soon. And so I, I would say embrace it. I, 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 as a one selectman, would be definitely supportive of the budget. Uh, it's a reasonable request, we had it up there that high in the past. I just don't wanna see the committee get up and going for three months, and then all of a sudden, you all get burnt out and you don't wanna do anything else. And so I would pace yourself as you ramp up to do these activities.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, I think you'll find the board supports this 100%. The reason we brought the budget down is it wasn't being used, and we found that the last few years it was used, it was mostly on that trip to Boston where a very few people in town were almost entitled to a certain amount of money to go down to Boston on that trip and come back. And that didn't seem all that fair, because, you know, the monies weren't being used for Halloween and this, or a wider variety of the townspeople would be getting, you know, benefit from it. So I know that Mike made that comment the last time we saw the bus go down there, the last couple of years, and it seemed odd, because only my use was for that bus, so they were trying to use up the majority of it. And then it died down where there was nobody here, so that's why we brought it down.
Sure.
But we did keep it earmarked with 400, so I think the thousand is very reasonable in our budget and easily attainable.
Thank you, I think you brought up a, a thought I had meant to say, and that is one of the things that I feel this commission would be required to do, is do some really widespread advertising of all of the activities that are available, is I think the bus to Boston, part of it was word of mouth, like, anybody here, if the bus is going, you know, that kind of thing, and so.
They advertised it on the website, but.
But I think if we could somehow put up signs or something that get people more aware of it, it would help.
But more, more than that, what I was thinking is, if you get a thousand dollar budget and you break down five or six ideas, you should set a percentage that, of that money you wanna use towards that Boston trip and keep your other monies available. You just wanna be careful how you spend your monies, because a thousand dollars isn't that much.
Thank you, yeah.
Can I just speak on that? So right now, the rec commission has about $18,000 in their checking account, and they petitioned the voters to take that money from a checkbook that they had no control of, and the selectmen were curious as to why they were holding this money, so now they're responsible for that. But you can't co-mingle an operating budget with the, the rec commission. So they have the authority under a vote of their committee to expend whatever they need for the purpose of recreation. So if you received a thousand dollars from the town and you found that $800 covered the bus trip, that leaves you $200 in your operating budget, you have that money that you don't wanna exceed. But in, in the event of the rec commission deciding, we wanna host a Halloween event that's gonna exceed that, then they would have to make a vote to spend their money to transfer it to cover those costs.
Sure.
So, um, it, it's, it's very doable. I think 10 years ago, when the bus trip was really popular, I, I, we would track the people signing up and the number of seats, and the bus would fill up very quickly.
It did, yes.
And then the problem that we had is, um, some people from Bo or Concord or Goffstown heard about it through a friend, and they would reserve two or three seats, and then that would leave fewer seats for residents. So, um, it, it was, it's a, I think, a double-edged sword when you start advertising it out of the community, um, that if other people aren't interested in, in partic, you know, it's inexpensive, they charge it $10 or $15, and then that, plus the cost, would help cover the cost for the tip for the driver.
And then what happens if they use 800 of the thousand dollars, what happens to the other 200?
If they don't spend it, it lapses.
And comes back to our fund.
Right, that particular one, right, but not the revolving one, it's that retained.
No, the revolving fund, they do whatever they would like to, they just have to, they have to go through the office so that we can release the funds and process the payment for their bills.
So whatever you don't use during that fiscal year will come back to the town.
It lapses, yeah, sure.
And goes back to the general fund, which typically goes back most to the taxpayers, unless you find something else. So I just wanna make sure you knew that.
You know, I, I, the concept of going to Boston, the bus trip sounds good, but I, I don't wanna open up the Bo and do Bo's recreation.
Right.
And I think that Dunbar, it's, let's do it for our citizens.
For our people, sure.
Do you have any comments, Justin?
Well, I think it's a good idea to expand the services here for Dunbarton residents and children and things like that, me being self, having two children here in the community. I mean, I like the idea of getting some more things to do around here, you know, on the weekends and stuff like that for, for us to do as a family, so.
I'm excited. I'm excited to see some interest to come back to this committee.
We're excited to have that opportunity if we can, so thank you.
These volunteers are, should get a, take them out of the woodwork, it's hard to find them.
Oh, I know.
Because this is an appointed position, you might wanna reach out to Chrissy, anyone who's interested, to ask them to put your name as a recommenda, for a recommendation to be appointed as a rec committee person.
Right, we, we, we basically vote you in.
I see, we hadn't yet decided who those two might be even, but thank you, yes.
Yeah, just go through them, because they've already been appointed.
You want them to reach out to Linda Bumpa for the papers?
Right, no, they have to go through Chrissy and Jen, Jen will then reach out to Linda, and then the org will get the appointed paper to sign it in.
At this point, I'm gonna pencil in $1,000 on our budget line for you, pencil in at this point.
Thank you very much. Any other question?
No, just one.
And I'm gonna call on the people of our committee who are here, Emma, we have other people.
Can you state your name for the record for the?
Yeah, Amelia Holden, um, I would almost argue that a thousand dollars is not enough. If we're taking the Halloween and Christmas from a garden club, that alone would wipe out most of that, mainly because, yes, candy was $350, but we ran out, and that is, um, we only spent $350 because someone else donated $200 worth of treats on top of that. So if the, the town was covering that, you would have $550 right there. Um, the lights and all the things that we've been providing, those are pretty much at the end of life, so those will need to be replaced within a year, and that alone will wipe a good chunk of the next year's.
As, as I said, though, I don't want you to go full steam for, out of the starting block. I would say use, pick the, the things you wanna do, make them successful, and then following year, expand upon it, because I, I, I just don't wanna expand so fast.
I agree.
And, and you burn out all your volunteers, and you have nothing left, and.
We spoke about baby steps, thank you, yes, definitely.
So I, I'm, I'm, I hear you about the thousand dollars, but I'd say it's a starting point.
Okay, so on that note, they have $400 in this calendar year that expires December 31st, so if you guys think that you have lighting that needs to be replaced for 2023, now's the time to do it.
For 2022.
No, they have funds for this year.
That's what I'm saying.
To buy the wire and the lighting for next year.
Well, they're not, they're not committee members yet, so.
No, I know, but, but they would have to go through the rec committee and ask them to put in a request to, to cover the cost of lighting.
So we would go to Jen then, in other words, all right, thank you.
And then have her write to the office that they would like to cover the cost for these expenses to come from the rec committee budget.
They'll save it for next year's budget already, it's an extra 400 already.
For this year.
Thank you, good suggestion, thank you, Emma.
And Emma, and Emma, there, uh, I don't think that that rec commission, Dawn, was ever fully funding everything they used to do. I think there was a lot of volunteerism and a lot of donations even back then as part of this process. So I would think, you know, I would, I would be with Mike if you wanna start at the thousand dollars, and then as we see it go up, and as we see the needs, then change it maybe, and, and we have our budget season, and you guys are a committee, you know, just like everybody else. Lee will put you on in the fall here, we're about to start our budget meeting shortly, and, and we'll go through that process with your group every year, just like we do the other department heads.
Sure. I was just gonna say, if we could have a little bit more time to make sure that we go through an internal budget kind of thought ourselves, and just, as you said, pencil about a thousand dollars, because we may come back with.
Exactly, exactly.
A little bit.
Exactly, I'm, I'm putting out placeholder right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so reach out to Lee and it should hit you on the schedule for.
And we.
Through, well, first they should be appointed as a rec committee. And then, um, the old home day did exactly that, they would, they were given $5,000 one year, and they came up almost to the end of their budget, and then because there wasn't any rec committee activity, we shifted the money to theirs, because they wanted more events at the site. So that budget went up, they now are reviewing those expenses and what they've collected for fees on their, the unanticipated revenue. So they're, you know, preparing to either, A, replace, you know, picnic tables or do other things with the funds that they have remaining, so that they can have a step forward with next year's budget with what they're, they have at their hands right now for use, so.
And I just wanna say, I almost say, express thank you to the garden club, remember the garden club were here. The garden club really did pick up the slack when the Recreation Committee fell apart two years ago, and doing the Halloween, the Christmas, and some things they had to put a stop to, they wanted to do so much. And so, so I, I expressed thanks to the garden club.
Thank you.
Can I also say that I received a compliment on the event itself? You guys held a wonderful event, there was a big turnout of children, it looked spectacular. And then the following day, there was one little paper of, found on the ground, not a single stitch of anything. It was like it never happened, it's like, when did they do this?
We did that in the dark.
I know, so they had to, they had to have done it in the dark, because there was nothing. And it was, like, never happened, but it was, you guys did a great job, thank you.
Because there was nothing to be found.
Yeah.
That's great, that's good to know.
Did you wanna go through the introduction of the rest of your group?
I would be happy to have them introduce themselves, that would be the best.
And Nora Lamar.
Sue Bracy.
Eva Larson.
Emma Holden.
Okay.
You'll be joining.
Okay. With that, I'll say, thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you so much.
And we'll make sure you're part of the budgets, invited for the budget season.
Thank you so much, yes.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
I'm smiling, so the committee's coming back.
And thank you, nice job.
This is Anthony?
Yes.
Anthony, how do you do, come next, and then we'll go real fast. Anthony, for the record, I'll write your email, I'll let you talk to it.
Which other gentleman didn't get it?
Absolutely.
Welcome to Dunbar, by the way.
Yes, thank you, I'm glad, really glad to be here. My name's.
Can you just state your name and address for the rest of the season?
Yeah, absolutely, Anthony Higstrom, 1108 Gorham Pond Road. Um, just moved to town the other, last Friday, this past Friday, and I just came into the office, kinda just see if there was anything I needed to do, and one thing led to another, and I had asked about a, maybe putting up a deaf sign potentially around my house. My son lost his hearing when he was 18 months old from an illness, he's now three and a half. So he, he is deaf, but we do have cochlear implants as a hearing aid, if you would, that gives him that capabilities. So I thought, one thing led to another, and here I am to present the question, if that's something that we can kind of, just kind of put on a docket down the line here.
I will speak for myself, I don't have any problem with this, and I think, I think it's important enough, we should get right on it, work with our road agent to get the signage.
Yeah, I think it's a very reasonable request, and I support it 100%.
Awesome, appreciate it, thank you.
So I'll take a little lean talk with the road agent to get that signed, sometimes the signs take a little while to commit, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we can make it happen.
Absolutely, well, thank you.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Is your phone number in that email?
Um, it may not be, but.
If you could just jot it down there, I can just write it down.
Because I think I'll have the road agent meet with you so that you can.
Location.
Find, you know, fine tune that location for the curb before you're.
You're gonna go both directions, or?
Whatever, whatever the road agent.
Yeah, whatever works best for, for road agent and the town and the community, so, um, definitely, much appreciated.
Okay, I think it's a good safety concern. Thanks for coming, Anthony.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Did you register to vote too?
Oh, yeah, I, I'll have to do it the day of, so, yeah, absolutely, appreciate it.
Next Tuesday.
Yep, absolutely, on my calendar.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, we took it out of order, I'm gonna let John come in, and Tom Clark, contingent?
Indepently.
Indepently, I took contingent.
Tom Clark in training.
Good evening, everybody.
Anything, how are you?
No, why, I mean, a, a shorter evening this time, I'm hoping.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just gonna start out real quickly, a couple of things from the last, from September elections. We're gonna do away with the plexiglass, however the, Sue would like the plexiglass being available for the supervisors of the checklist.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, because I remember it was hard, it was hard, people checking in and also.
Checking out, you have to, you have to, people would stick their head around to avoid it and so you can hear. It was kinda like, why are we doing it then?
Exactly, yeah. Um, but again, masks, masks will be available for those that so, so desire.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me know.
We'll do that, yeah. Yeah, we still have some, correct.
The only thing I liked is they weren't able to put it in the box themselves.
Yeah, but I think, again, it was just hard whenever checking out, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's time.
Yeah. Linda, would you like to go through the checklist, or?
Yeah, okay, so, um, Woody is gonna set up at 3 o'clock, he's got two people working with him. We've got one table request, that's for reeds across Dunbar, and they're gonna set up at 4:30. We asked them to come in a little bit later to give the setup crew time to do what they needed to do. Um, I'm still fine tuning the poll worker schedule, I think I've got it all covered, I've had a few last minute requests for changes. We're gonna get our meals from Constantly Pizza. John, our moderator, has the tablet, so he's, he's got that covered. Uh, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, we got, our absentee ballots were shipped to us on October 3rd, we got 578 of those. We received the official ballots on October 13th, we received 2,200 of those. So Jennifer and I went through all the procedures and counted everything and verified them. To date, we have issued 150 absentee ballots, 121 have been returned. I know sooner update the list and somebody comes in and requests for one. I expect I'll have more requests on Monday as well. My town clerk conference, we had speakers that included the Secretary of State, Bud Fitch, who is legal counsel for the Secretary of State, we had the Attorney General, we, we had everybody there. This was all about elections, that's how important these elections are right now. So I've highlighted a few things that they stressed or covered. Wanted to let you know that there are gonna be two international election inspectors visiting New Hampshire in November, so there's a possibility that we will have a visit from them. One is from Czechoslovakia and one is from Norway. Uh, the Attorney General will have poll inspectors visiting, as they did before. There is a checklist that John has a copy of, you will have the election procedure manual.
Yes.
Yes, the white one?
Yes.
Okay, there is a copy in there, but I pulled it out and I can leave it with Lee, individual copies for you if you'd like.
The international inspectors, are this will make sure they're gonna be exempt from going into the corral?
Um, they will be with officials, so we can let the officials, you know, watch them, but you can suggest that.
I, I would prefer that they, that they just stay out.
Stay out.
Yeah, and that's your call.
There's no need for them to be inside.
Right.
I understand there's, there's, there's stations, and I'm still gonna go into that at all, thank you.
Right, and that's, that was a good point, Mike. Um, some of the other things, oh, they, they'll have the poll inspectors, which we discussed. Uh, they touched on a few other things about the signs, you know, people outside with their signs, and then they lean them up against the building and they walk away. Then they said that the signs don't have to be held in their hand, but they have to be within arm's reach. So if they just lay them down next to them or whatever, you can't bag them for that, as long as they're within reach of whoever's doing the campaigning. They also talked about signs on public property, they can be removed from public property, but they should not be destroyed.
I think, and always, we take them off the town commons, we put them behind the police station, they can pick them up at their office.
Right, so they stress just don't destroy them.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
And if somebody should call here and say, you know, I had a political sign and somebody stole it off my lawn, they should refer to the police department, because that is theft. They stress that is theft if you take it off of private property. So those calls should go to the PD. Um, they also reminded us that Microsoft is gonna do their regular soft, monthly software update. They also reminded us that Microsoft is gonna do their regular soft, monthly software update on the eighth. It won't really affect you, cause unless you do the update, the supervisors of the checklist are aware of it, so they'll just postpone. Cause they will be live registering people to vote. They also reminded you to please review your duties in the election procedure manual. I've got a full set of selectmen duties, all the new changes are highlighted in yellow, I'll leave that with Lean. So you have a portable copy instead of carrying this hunkus encyclopedia.
Justin's polished up on it.
They said the moderator is legally responsible for ensuring all poll workers are doing their jobs correctly, so I hope you read that whole book.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
A refresher.
They said any election official who will be absent all or part of the day should delegate a pro tem. Provided that the pro tem is not already holding in office, that would be considered incompatible with selectmen or moderator.
I think we're all, right, right now all is fine.
Yeah, I think we are too. And they said the duty of the board of selectmen is to help the moderator in whatever role the moderator needs, this is your opportunity. Okay, I do have a tentative schedule, as I said, a little fine tuning. I need to know if there are gonna be any pro tems or assistance, if you guys are gonna need any, so I can make the appointment papers.
Not as, not as of right now?
Not as of right now, and then you can let me know if you're gonna appoint somebody.
Yeah, the only thing I think would happen, if someone, one of us could, you know.
Exactly, and then that would be a, and we'll have like appointment forms for that, that you all can fill in. We're going to, this, this time around, I've got, we're gonna do two in tables for the ballot clerks, so we'll divide the alphabet. So there won't be that big pile right there trying to get ballots. We're pretty fast with the out table and it's kinda difficult to split the out table when you've only got one ballot box. That just gets complicated, so we'll have two check-in tables and one checkout table. Got most of that covered, we might have one of you folks fill in for a ballot counter, one of them. I have a schedule like seven to one, but one of them has to leave at noon, so maybe for that last hour. One of you could fill in and John will take care of appointing all that. We've got greeters all day, I've got greeters working four hour shifts. And John and I thought that we should have them just be greeters, not floaters to fill in different places. We thought it was better for you folks to fill in for the ballot clerks, to cover for their lunch or whatever. That way we've got the regular election officials working those regular stations.
Are you sure, cause Mike likes greeting?
I know, but.
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
Well, and the other thing too, you know, with this, this many absentee ballots, again, we, I need to rethink, we need to rethink how we're gonna do that.
After nine o'clock.
After nine, yeah, but again, we're gonna get a system down a little quicker than.
Than what we did before.
Right.
Yeah, the past good times was.
Too slow.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, that whole system seems archaic because you're hollering the name and half the time you can't hear the name properly and it just, it seems so archaic, that part of the system.
That reminds me, gavel. Next year, can we budget for a gavel for the moderator?
I'll, I'll donate one to the town.
Fred would always bang the gavel and he would just make everybody be quiet while he was doing absentee ballots.
We do.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
What I can, I have, I have an extra one at home that I inherited from my dad and I will give it to you from the town, you donate to the town.
Okay.
Perfect, then you'll have your own.
Yep.
And I think I've got all of that covered, is there anything that you folks need for me to know?
Don't mess lunch up. I had one suggestion, somebody asked, and I didn't have a chance to run it by you. Is, is there a chance we could run one of the two meals through the local San shop here, only to just spread some business around locally?
I, maybe we could try it for the March meeting, but the November one's pretty well all already kinda like scheduled and arranged.
If you guys can think about that, I would think that you'd have to do the lunch, cause they're not open.
Cause they're not open for dinner.
But I would just, somebody suggested that and I didn't get a chance to run it by you guys.
Okay. In March.
I know some other groups do some bulk buying from them and I think it works out okay.
Okay. Alright, so you don't have anything else for me?
I wanna go, I like to see a nice, quiet day.
So Jennifer's been, by the way, Jennifer has been my math major here and my computer person. She's been working on the fine tuning, all those tally sheets that we use all the time for the count. And she's just certainly gone over them with John to make sure they're the way he wants them, so.
So at the end of the night, it's gonna go faster?
No, I, I, I like to make a recommendation, is Joe Nelliot is pivotal in counting.
Absolutely.
And I like to probably get him involved early, before, like five minutes before to figure out how we're gonna do it. Let him look at the counting sheets, how he wants, if this changes, it should be done earlier than later.
Yeah, cause that really does.
Jennifer already spoke about how he'd like it laid out.
Yes, I think that's incredible, like, you can see how he.
Oh yeah, he's.
Yeah, he's really good with that.
And I had to do it once without him and I, I floundered.
Yeah.
And so I, I really look at him as a instrumental to make it go smoothly, and the thing is, if he gets involved earlier, we don't, there's like fifteen minutes where we're like, which way is up?
Actually, he got involved last week, cause he and Jennifer went over it and she designed it the way he asked her.
Perfect, and that way, you know, Joe's gonna be taking the load off the moderator, so he can just get it done. And the last thing is, I, I don't think any of our campaigners have ever violated rules and if we, they did, like, they would leave signs posted and walk away to their car. We would, many of us would correct them, and I, I think we're courteous about it and that they're really not intentional violations.
Correct.
Right, and I just brought that up because that were, those were some of the things that were highlighted.
Right, and I think we, we do a good job as a team.
We've never let them leave them even out of their hands before, if they.
Right.
Right.
They leave them against something, we're gonna put them in their vehicles or, or lay them down on the ground.
Maybe that's why, because I'm sure that question's come up from a lot of towns and I think that's why they said, if they're, if it's arms length away, it's okay, just leave them be.
Yeah, so I know, we all work as a team to make it work well and as I said, Justin, you haven't been there really for a massive election like this. That's the boss man right there.
Yeah.
He's got legal authority to make sure it runs well, and the thing is, if it's screwed up, he's also on the blame line, so the thing is, we don't wanna, we wanna make numbers look good.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
And, and the, the last time when that inspector had come through, I never heard anything.
Negative.
Done, you know, negative, negative, so.
I felt like you know more than he did.
Just in case you forget it.
They don't tell you really though if you've done anything right or wrong.
Oh, they have in the past, they, Fred wrote them back right away, they, they nailed us for something about our handicap ramp at the entrance, excuse me. And so Fred had to get back in touch with them and say, it's a one-story building, there is no handicap ramp. So they had written some, some bad notes, probably another town, but Dunbar wound up with them.
The only concern, I do have, Rees across Dunbar, you know, the thing is, it gets crowded in the, and the thing is, you know, I don't mind having these activities, non-election related. Going on at the same time while we're voting, I think it's almost a, it's a conflict sometimes.
He's gonna be located in the southwest corner of the.
Okay.
Uh, cause we have the run of the, the gym.
Right.
So he can be on the other side.
Okay.
Midway.
I, I, I share that too, because the thing is, what you don't wanna do is have, you know, all that nice paraphernalia on the side interfering with our election.
Correct.
Cause we've always had cookies for sale.
Well, before, yeah, before I came to town, there was always, you're right, yes, cookies. There would be like seven tables, I would have to find out how many tables we had, so garden club usually had a table, 4H had a table.
Mike took the cookies away, that's a.
No, the thing is, it's, it's in for election, I, and the thing is, you don't want people congregating and sometimes those tables allow people to congregate and the thing is. Safety, and all those good things, we wanna make sure it goes smoothly, so.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
I got that discussion.
Okay, I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm on your, I'm an advocate for what you're doing.
Oh yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, three PM?
Yeah, I did it a little earlier, cause I have a, a meeting again.
John, I won't be able to make that three PM, but I'll be there the next morning, yeah.
With coffee?
There you go, I think that's, that's appropriate.
You know, I think it's appropriate that David bring a couple boxes of junk, probably that, that pulls up.
And the thing is, if he loses his receipts, that's his problem.
I've done that before.
Don't say, don't lose a receipt.
That's alright. What receipt?
Well, thank you for coming in, I, I'm hoping we have a nice peaceful day and without any glitches, and John, we're here as a portion.
Yeah. Alright, we'll see you guys.
Thank you, folks.
And I need to talk to you about a separate issue another time.
Okay.
Probably, probably do it Monday afternoon, if, I need ten minutes with you.
Yeah, more to me.
Okay.
We'll have all day Tuesday, right?
That's right.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Wear your roller skates.
We're gonna do okay.
Let's sign up plenty of counters, okay?
Yes, feel free to recruit them.
Oh, we're done.
Yeah, cause we're.
Thanks for coming, Jonathan.
We're gonna put you guys to work too.
We can't.
No, we can't.
No, we're overseers, we have to look at everything going on.
And then you also have to do, as assigned by the moderator.
Yeah.
So do decide what's likely to help the moderator in whatever role the moderator needs.
Well, I like helping Joe, cause I get, I feel like get the, the concept.
You need us to recruit more people, I mean.
Thank you, John.
I'll stand.
See you guys.
That's right, yeah, okay, good idea.
Okay.
Thank you, you might, thank you, Doc.
Okay, next on the agenda, what are the assessors? What, we're trying to make head or tails of this, I've got some emails on, Lean's got some discussion on this during the week. And what I come to a conclusion is that Lean shared with me that we may be, they may have missed billing us for one year. And that's why the bill may have appeared a little bit larger than usual, David. And so I wanna get a clarification and an email for our auditing purposes, that if they failed to bill us for the last calendar, the last fiscal period. I'd get an email to delineate that and then pay the bill, I'm happy, as long as we get an explanation of why the bill was so long, anyone discuss that?
Yeah, just was not clear enough, when I read through the billing on it.
What I did notice though in the attachment is it had two separate year tabs, so that's what led me to believe that it was for two separate billing periods.
And if we could get that on, like an email, that'd be perfectly fine and, I, I have no problem. After that email's in her receipt, she's satisfied, town administrators are satisfied, I'd be more than happy to let her bill.
Well, the thing is, it's.
I don't wanna go into rears, cause it's a contract.
No, but you know, the other thing they've gotta understand that, you know, we have a fiscal budget we're trying to hold to, so we put appropriate amount of money aside, then this is doubling that.
Right, but on the other hand too, in the past, they had money lapsed every year and I was not following the billing process because it's on the contract very closely. So now I understand that in the regular month, month billing, the annual pickups are billed for hours with a zero dollar. And I can see that very clearly, and then they bill us once at the end of the year, so I will make sure that we either pay.
It's almost easier to follow, they build your regular budget.
Right, or encumber the, the funds at the end of the year.
Well, I don't think we need to, we just need to make sure that around forty-five hundred for their budget.
Right.
Five thousand, so. I think that, I think that that, that part is important, I just wanna make sure that, you know, because we have to find this money somewhere.
I know, yeah, but the thing, and we have to, it's called, we have to.
Yeah, and we've been running tight, you know, a tight budget for.
So we're under by about, how much, about two thousand?
All, all told, they'll be overspent by six grand.
Six grand, and the thing is, maintenance lines, you know, I think, I think we have discretionary money at this point.
Yeah, the thing is, we don't have a lot of money in there, I mean.
It's coming to an end.
You have, you have our.
We're eighteen, we've got eighteen.
Unassigned fund balance, so there is money in the account.
Right.
Which is unassigned, but then again, we're going over our budget process, which I wanna make sure to keep this in their section of it, so we can see which departments went over or under.
Right, that's typically a, a good habit to show the red in one line and then adjust the budget accordingly in the following year. That way it gives you a better idea of what the true expenses are.
Agreed, well, the thing is, you, where do you plan on taking, what county do you get?
It's going to come right out of the assessing line and show that it's a negative.
Okay.
And then the, the board is responsible for the bottom line and right now, we're at twenty-four percent. So we still have six hundred and ninety-one thousand in the budget for expenses.
And two months left.
Two and a half months, yeah.
And that's about eighteen percent.
Yeah, well.
Twenty-four percent.
Twenty-four, but there are line items that are going to be expended.
But you know, there are some, some things we can do, like I know the police department is missing one employee, they're gonna have some money left over above and beyond what they're.
Oh, at the end of the year, it's one thing.
So, you know, at the end of the year, I think we're gonna, even if it's not on the main budget, we're still gonna be final with our budget overall. I just, we have to watch this stuff close.
Absolutely, agree. Justin, any comment? So it's, town administrator, upon receiving that email for an explanation of that inconsistency.
If you want, you can forward it to us too, so we can give you feedback on it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, alright, moving on, my favorite one, utility poles, Dave.
Okay, I made a phone call, as I said, I went into the phone company for the utility pole, the Brown Hill Road. This was kind of a catch twenty-two because. It's about a thousand dollars per pole to move the poles and or wires. And speaking with Scott from the telephone company, he gave me a little update on that. That was previously a class six road, when the guy on subdivision went on with the chance. The chance had paid to have new poles put in there and paid the telephone company to put the wires in there. And now this section of road is part of a new subdivision, so the chance paid for that portion of it already. He said, this is no different, this is a subdivision for the town and the widening of the road is causing the poles to be moved, so it should be part of the contractors.
Exaction fee.
Exaction fee and or fees in, in general, so the only reason he built the town is, cause he said quite frankly, the developer didn't call him, the town called him to. Move those poles. And it was done, I think, as a combination of speaking between our, our planning department and Donna and everybody trying to find out information on where it was gonna go and how it was gonna get built, so. The reason he built the town, he said, was because the town is the one that called me to move the, the poles and or for the wires on there, he said, quite frankly, he said. We spent so much time down there, we didn't even bill in full for how long it took them to move the wires, he said, on them poles, we just did what we felt is a comfortable fee for us to do.
Okay.
So that being said, what I told him I thought we should do is to have a meeting with just the, the heads of the planning, which would be the, you know, the chair and the co-chair. Sometimes they bring a secretary or somebody else.
And maybe the selectmen's rep.
Yeah, the selectmen's rep, and I told him I would be there and we would just ask the developer to come back in one more time. Explain that there was a little bit of oversight with how this was done and how.
Oversight.
Oversight. And, you know, just be forthcoming with the developer and see if they're willing to work on this and tell them this is a bill we have that realistically is part of the developer's fees.
It should have been part of the exaction fee to start with.
And I was, and I was in those meetings and I don't think that this guy, at, at the beginning of those meetings, I was still on there. And I don't think that this guy is a, is a, a guy to say, no, I'm not gonna pay this and leave the town out, so. I think that's our first step, work with the developer and let them know, you know, we could have handled this a little bit better, but it didn't because. Right now, what is, it's not a class six road going to a class five road, which was, was the case with the chances, it's a class five road being upgraded on that section of the road.
Gotcha.
Which we're gonna have more and more of those now on these dirt roads, which will be cost to the developer, so we need to look at that a little bit better as we go forward. That being said, I think the best thing to do is meet openly with the developer and try and get them to commit to this.
And it's similar to, I'm gonna say Kelsey Road.
Yeah, it's very similar.
In the sense that subdivision's going up there and we asked the poles to be part of the exaction fee and.
So and that's, and that's kinda where this one got developed from and.
Okay.
So the only reason he sent this to the town is because it was really, the start of that process was a request from the town, not the developer at the time, so we probably should have made that developer call him. But, you know, we'll work through those items, it's kind of a new process.
Action item for planning board or Donna initially?
Why don't I talk with Donna about setting it up and we'll just add the planning board to it.
I, I think, I think you should be as a member, as a member of the select board, but Justin, you should take the lead on this, since you're a member of the planning board rep.
Yeah.
Do you understand what's going on here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna be there for the negotiation portion of it.
Exactly, I think you have a good explanation, you just defer to him in the meeting, if, if you wanna, if you wanna use him.
And so.
Obviously, and that was right at our transition when he was coming off, off the planning.
Cause I heard, I heard the first part of the subdivision.
Gotcha.
And then Justin took over and they did all the fees at the end.
Okay, and then planning board is meeting this month, that, we get, do it this month then?
Yes.
Yes, and maybe have them come in before.
I actually, I'd like to do it on a non-planning board meeting, just have a side meeting to it.
Okay.
While I'm Lean, make sure she posts it properly.
I'm, I'm happy with that.
And we're only posting it for the two selectmen to be. And we're only posting it for the two selectmen to be there, other than that, it's just a private meeting with the developer.
Consensus on, Justin, agree with that?
Yep.
Any concerns, Lean, from your point of view?
No.
All right, and we'll try and get it rectified, and we'll see how it goes, and if we get some, some feedback or kickback, I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay, I'd say, uh, let's make it an action, as an action item, thank you. All right, next item.
Lean, can I get a copy of that, will you just take with me?
Yep.
Just hop from the meeting.
I, I've talked about gutters, um, Jason, uh, Justin, excuse me. You got three bids for the, uh, for the garages, and three bids for this building.
Yep.
What's your course of action, and the recommendation?
Uh, so looking at the bids, um, went with three different companies, do you have them there?
Yep.
So I can get the exact amounts.
Okay.
We wanna hold off on the dollar amounts for the town office, and just.
Yeah, the town office, we're on a table for now, cause that was more of a budgetary item.
Okay.
Um, so we can budget for next year, I think.
Okay.
Um, but, I'd like to go over the ones for the PD.
Sure.
Is that something we need to do as a part of the Department of Labor? Um.
Deficiency.
Yeah. So I got three separate quotes, one from gutter done, um, and that includes five-inch gutters with leaf guards for a total cost of, uh, eleven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, I also got one from Energy Improvements, that's another five-inch gutters, white gutters with gutter guards. Um, and that one's eight ninety-five. And then I got a third quote from Gutters Plus, um, that is for six-inch gutters, excuse me. And that quote comes to nine fifty-three seventy-five, and that includes leaf guards as well.
So two for five, one to six inch.
Yeah.
I like the six inch myself, more cause, uh, I know that that roof has a big overhang on it, if you don't have the six inch, you're gonna miss the gutter altogether.
Right.
Yeah, and that roof is larger as well, so, I just thought that having the six inch would be a better idea as well.
All aluminum?
Considering the six, sixty dollars difference, yes.
Justin, do they have any type of thing, uh, where they're warranted, uh, like, builder's insulation, they're warranted for life, if the ice or snow rips them off, they would put them back up?
Um, we can read over that here, if you wanna read the terms and conditions, they do have a five-year workmanship warranty, and then there also is a twenty-year manufacturer warranty. Uh, that's from Gutters Plus, I didn't receive many warranty details.
That's a six inch one, right?
Yep, says five inch at the top, but it's, uh, six inch is an actual grade, if you look at the detailed quote, if you look at the line item here. But they have terms and conditions on that one. Um, so my suggestion would be to go with Gutters Plus, just being six inch. Gutters.
Customer is Justin Knoll.
It's not too much out of your budget, is it?
I can't believe you're paying for this.
Take it out of your salary, okay?
Yeah.
Um, I have no issue with going with the six inch, I like the idea of it, it will probably catch more debris, this drainage, and drainage is the issue with that, to keep water away from the building. And with that compliment of the seal on the bottom, which we approved last time, it may, won't be perfect, but it'll be a step in the right direction.
Step in the right direction.
Do you have availability for that, when they can get that working?
Two weeks, he said earlier.
For that to go in?
They were, yeah, from Gutters Plus, he was out from, to November twelfth, when I emailed them back today.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept that bid from Gutters Plus, for the six inch gutters, for the, for the safety center.
For the sum of nine fifty-three seventy-five?
Thank you.
I'll second make's motion.
Any further discussion on that?
Thanks for getting these bids together for us, Justin.
That's a pure maintenance item. And that could be included in your report back to the state.
I will, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and the other, the item one was.
It'll be a few days late from when we're supposed to have it done, but.
As long as I report something in writing.
The other items we're gonna table, uh, for Justin's recommendation, is, uh, we're thinking about gutters for this building, so we can preserve the paint job.
For next year's budget.
For next year's budget.
Yeah.
I think, is, I think we'll look at it as an estimate and probably round up, because of just the way things go.
With this being asphalt, we'd have no problem, that building over there being slate, won't really work on it, so, this building here will be fine.
Yeah, but talk, the roof on this one, maybe you looked at it in the spring?
Yeah.
So that was the other item we were looking at too, so.
I don't think it'd be wise for us to invest in, you know, that kind of money in gutters, and then have them shingles damage it, or ladders.
Yeah, we'll do it afterwards.
Yeah, agreed, Justin?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, but that, that's something that, that Phil and me made a sound on, one of the things that we're doing is the, the roof, is there gonna be an issue? All right, mailbox items are going to. Okay, uh, got a request from the Dunbarren, um, on behalf of the Board of the Library Trustees, to move the, um, book drop, uh, the book, the pickup and book drop from the existing spot in front of the town hall, to the town office area. Um.
Mike, that's the drop box where she puts the books out, and they pick them up the drop box?
Correct.
I don't have any problem with moving that right over here next to the mailbox item here now.
I would like to have just a little bit away from the mailbox, just so it's not confused with anything.
A little mailbox, all right.
Yeah. But you're not colorblind.
She said she's, you know, flexible, but it makes sense to have it on the same side, so that the snowplow's not gonna be, you know.
Destroying it.
Destroying anything, and then.
And it doesn't affect the parking spots and all that, they can walk up to it.
That's where they're currently parked.
I have no issue with that at all. No.
They're using our parking lot to park today, so, it'll be the same thing, except they're walking, not walking across the lawn.
I, I have no problems, Lean, just, uh, I want you to coordinate the exact spot to put it in, a, a few feet away from the, the blue box, that's all.
And I wanna, uh, as a board, reach out and say thank you to the trustees of the library, as well as Mary, for making a very workable situation with them, with the construction ongoing over there, and they're being very patient, and they.
Yeah.
Went to their last trustee meeting, and, you know, hats off to them, cause they could be putting a lot of pressure on us, that's undoing this market, but that's, it's glad, glad to see they're working with us very well.
Agreed. Okay, Justin?
Yep.
Okay, then I have a, I have an email from Woody, he's been proactive in talking about the, uh, the transfer station operating hours and the holiday schedule. Uh, I think, uh, his recommendations are spot on, correct, I have no issues with him, and, uh, um, he's not really closing on the eve of Thanksgiving, or the eve of Christmas, or New Years.
His employees have chosen to work and not miss the hours, which.
Right, and so I have, uh, and he just gave us a warning of the, uh, the revenues are gonna be a little bit low this year, and it's gonna drop.
I really, yeah.
That's it. And, uh, concludes the, uh, the mailbox. Lean?
I am.
It's floating in the air so light.
I know, it's not unusual, huh?
It is.
Um, I just do, I do wanna point out that the, with the, um, Department of Labor inspection report, that I've sent out to all the departments, everybody's working hard and fast to comply with the, um, deficiencies, which aren't major, um, Justin's been a big help with some of the more major cost-related things, and everyone said that they would be able to meet the deadline that we have for the, the tenth of November.
Can you respond, is it respond by email?
I will.
No, because they're accepted with the email.
I've already, yes, I've already, um, received a lot of photos that I will include with the email, so that they can correspond.
You'll see CS when you send it in.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Were you able to get ahold of the, uh, electricians responding at the latest?
I had one, I had one electrician stop in today, he went into the library, he said that he could get us a quote, he may not be able to do it right off, but, you know, he said, he knows.
Luckily, we have the quote, we have it scheduled even for next year, cause it's not operating right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So basically, the, the report says, if, um, that I have to put something in writing to request an extension, in, in the event I, I can't meet our bid policy.
Like Lean said, the two areas they found were under construction already, so it's.
Right, I, I would say, that'd be an appropriate response, they plan to be, at the conclusion that, during the construction process, they're, they're gonna be replaced.
Right, so there were items like, uh, missing light bulbs, all those have been replaced.
Yeah.
It's pretty much just the lit exit signs that were worked.
Now they make them out of LEDs, they last forever.
Yeah.
And they, they need to be upgraded.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's, I'll open a public comment.
Got nothing.
Got nothing, no public comment, bring it back to the board, Lean, you're on again, you have anything else for the board?
Nope, I have nothing else.
You have anything for non-public tonight?
I do.
Okay, we'll go non-public per your request at the appropriate time, Justin, you're on.
Nothing tonight.
Lean, um.
Wait, wait one second.
The sprinkler company had finished their final bill to us, and we're holding off until they fill up and test the tanks with John.
That's correct, John, yeah.
Did you notify them of that, did you call Eddie or talk to him?
Uh, no, I haven't, I just was, but I can send them an email.
Could you do that, unless you want me to reach out?
It doesn't matter, I have the email in came.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is, update for the library, obviously you gotta come in tonight, saw the pavement with them. And they're gonna try and keep everybody off until they stripe it, as part of their contract, has to be striped. Uh, when they do that, if it's cheap enough, just the handicap section over here, I'd like to maybe ask that they stripe that.
Two stripes for that, yeah.
Well, uh, they do a hatch mark right next to the, the handicap to give enough room to get out, so nobody parks, so, so the hatch mark in that one line. Just, just to keep people from parking in that area, that sign's not in the corner, it's out of ways, so people.
It's deceiving.
It's deceiving, so.
Sometimes people crowd it, so.
Yeah, so, somebody could park in the corner, but if I think we just keep it in that corner, and do that one stripe there.
I have no problem with that, if you can coordinate, that'd be wonderful.
And then, uh.
And what about that signs for a second parking?
So they have that done, and then, uh.
A little bit of humor.
Give you, give you a little update inside, the grid work is done, uh, a lot of the lighting fixtures have been hung and put in place. Um, permit power in the building is coming towards the end of this month from, uh, public service schedule. Um, they're still waiting for three breakers for the panel, but the company's supposed to ship it without it, the guts to the four hundred and fifty amp panel. Um, all the sprinkler work is done, and it's all tied in, the tanks haven't been filled yet, but they're gonna have.
What, and the, the elevator is gonna be, when?
He said the, um, on the fifteenth of this month.
Okay.
So, if they have their other ones done, and the schedule's perfect, he moved it off one month, the owner lost one of his installation crews, so he's doing them himself.
Okay, and the, the exterior doors?
The exterior doors are scheduled for the, um, I believe the twenty-eighth of the month, and the hardware is eighteen.
And the finish on the doors, have they been finished already?
The doors are all gonna be poly, the ones that are natural, and all the trim work is painted.
Okay.
And I'm not sure when their painter's scheduled.
I, I hate to do it in the middle, like, it's ten to fifteen degree, I mean, low temperature, it doesn't.
Well, if you see, they have temp doors on there now.
Yeah.
So the outside ones, they'll probably do before they install them.
I, I, that'd be wise.
And the rest are all in heated condition space.
Right, I don't know, I'm concerned.
Think the Mitsubishi's are all hooked up, and that's all done, and then the air handler's all set.
Oh, did, can you bring up that tour that's happening tomorrow?
Oh, Margaret called me, there's a, um, a group of people that had donated to the building.
It's Margaret Watkins from the, uh.
Well, she's on many committees, but, um.
She's representing?
She's representing the Town Hall Restoration Committee, back before my time, uh, there was a company that had done a small donation, from what I understand, it wasn't that large.
It was probably a grant that they've got in there.
And so this, this group of people is coming back around to look at what their grants have done.
Okay.
Now, this entrance has nothing, um, not a lot to do with the grant that they got, but they wanna go around and see if the buildings are getting updated, and, you know, it's a feel-good type of thing, so. That group of people's coming in at nine o'clock tomorrow, and Bobby's aware of it on the site, and he's gonna clean it all up.
Okay.
By the way, all the metal handrails are in, and the wood handrails are in, um, the stairs are all complete, so it's all, it meets, uh, any code to walk up and down those stairs now.
We're getting there.
Yeah, so it's coming, uh, most of it now is just waiting for odds and ends, oh, by the way, the Lula stage door is installed. I did, um, talk with Tom Cason a couple times this week, he's having some of his employees, um, get that Lula brought over to this site, so Bobby can fit it in the stage.
Bobby's a Gemini I met before?
Yes, Bobby Shagner from Chicoons.
Okay, who's also an embedded contractor for the teacher.
Site super and carpenter on, on site.
Okay, super Dave, thank you. Any questions for Dave on this? It's, it's long overdue progress.
Yeah, I mean, it's winding down, but I think that, now, now it's pretty much waiting for things to have construction delays.
Now, the thing is, uh, the, the elephant in the room is the, uh, the use policy, we have the draft, and, uh, probably before the end of this year, we should probably pull that out, dust it off, and see if we got any change to that recommendation, so, as I said before, I still like to see potential, uh, uh, user fee for non-town entities, uh, only because I just wanna maintain the building and keep it in good shape, and, uh, we're gonna have to pay someone from our clinic who does this building, to call it there clean, and sweep, and vacuum, and stuff like that.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to put that in our budget next year.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so I think a user fee for those, uh, external agencies, uh, or organizations that use it, that might be something reasonable, I mean, similar, like, I understand the church, when they rent out their facility, they charge one too, and, uh.
Yeah, my only problem with that, if it's a, if it's a town of Dunbarren, volunteer-based thing, and they have a five oh one C. I mean, other than having people volunteer, doing a bake sale, or, or doing a fundraising, there's a lot of those committees, there's no way for them to earn money. So that even paying nominal fees, it's tough on them, and so, either somebody's gonna donate, or somebody's gonna fundraise, or something like that. And when they're volunteering all their time to the town of Dunbarren for the benefit, I just have a little bit of tough love with that, especially since most of them are taxpayers and all that too, so I, I would like to just go slowly with that process, and maybe think it through for a year, and see how it happens.
And the thing is, I, and, I'd be very upset if, if after putting all those, our tax dollars on there.
Yeah.
And go up there and place it as trashed after, you know, trash barrels full, spilled drinks and coffee everywhere, I'd be, you know, they just did the floors over, and someone didn't even bother picking up spilled coffee.
Yeah, there'll have to be some kind of a deposit.
And basically, you know, it's carry-in, carry-out up there, almost like a, a, a public park, because there's no room to store, uh, bunches of stuff up there.
Right, and as it should be.
And it sounds like even with this, um, growing recreation committee, they're looking for a place to do yoga, line dancing.
But everything they bring in, whether it's pads or whatever, will be carry-in, carry-out.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a big storage area up there, there's no where's in that building.
But as I said, I, I think the target should be January first, to have a, uh, policy firmed up.
Yeah.
So just dust off, look at it.
I'll scan it to you, so you can have it electronic, and then I'll, I'll print some paper copies, there's only a couple pages.
And I'm, and I'm not opposed to, uh, doing some charging, I just, we'd have to really think it through, because there's a lot of these nonprofits that have five oh ones Cs, there's no good way for them to come up with money, other than people.
Right, and the thing is, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, even if they put a deposit against it, so the thing is, if they trash the place, at least they'll have some, some, we have some sort of, other way of saying, you know, you can't use it anymore.
Well, I think that, you know, we're gonna put, if something happens, the brakes are gonna come on pretty quick for us, and then.
Yeah.